Good afternoon, welcome to the Monday, March 19th, 2018 Board of Commissioner meeting. Reverend Joe Griffith has been kind enough to come and give us the invocation and pledge, if you could all rise.
Let's pray. Father, we have thanks for the blessings of this day, and we come this night to ask your blessings upon these commissioners and the business that is before them. We pray that you would give them discernment in their decision-making process, and then that the decisions would be those that truly benefit the citizens of this county. We thank you for their sacrifice from their families and for their time, and we pray, Lord, that surely their efforts will be rewarded by your blessings. For we offer our prayer always in the name of Christ our Lord, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Griffith. You may be seated. Moving on, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda to remove Item A under the administrative reports, the audit report. Mr. Burton couldn't be with us this evening.
Any other changes?
No, sir.
We didn't want to make commissioner reports.
And to go ahead and move the commissioner's report right after public comment, before administrative reports.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to public comment, we have three folks signed up for public comment this evening. If I could call Mr. Ben Wilson, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Ben Wilson, 164 Mariners Way. I'm here to comment because I couldn't attend your March 5th meeting on beach permits. I only have one comment, but let me give you a little background why I'm making this comment. I'm a relatively new resident of Currituck County. I've been here four years, retired out of the federal government, out of Washington, DC, and hopefully my wife, this will be our last house. But my grandchildren come in, let me give you a little background. My sons, both of them live in Virginia, we have six grandchildren. They like to go out to watch the horses, do a little fishing, and you could almost call me a day tripper. I do this about six or seven times. Driving from Currituck around through the Outer Banks is about an hour and 45 minutes to where we're going to get. We usually go to the park, have some hamburgers and hot dogs. The only comment I have, as a county resident now, is Section 5, or excuse me, Section F, where extra beach parking permits at no additional cost and no vehicles assigned to them, for people living up in Corrova and north of the access point. It says county residence. Why can't every county residence in the county of Currituck have that same privilege? To have those two extra non-cost, and they're not vehicle specific, because when my son comes, I'm sure people come down that live here on the mainland, they have visitors and friends. Both of my sons have four-wheel drives. I don't know what I'm going to do. I have one permit, or will have hopefully, one permit, but it'll be vehicle specific. Why can't my family or any other family in Currituck County have those two additional when friends come in? And that's my comments, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Any questions?
No, sir. If I could call Paul O'Neill. Mr. O'Neill, if you could, keep your comments to three minutes. The lights will let you know when to start and when to finish.
Thank you, sir.
Greatly appreciate your consideration in that.
Can I start at this time?
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm looking for the green light. Thank you. Paul O'Neill, 893 Water Lily Road, Coinjock, North Carolina. First of all, I'm here tonight to represent the trustees for College of the Albemarle, and it's an honor and a privilege to be able to speak to each of you tonight, and I thank staff and the commissioners for all that you do for College of the Albemarle. We have a really great asset here in Currituck County with the early college. We're graduating high school kids with associate degrees, gives them a leg up when they leave out of here to go and finish their college education. We have dual enrollment in our high school where kids that don't go to the early college can accrue college credits that they can use to transfer to a four-year university. I'll use my daughter as an example. By taking college courses here at Currituck High School, she was able to cut a semester off of her college, and she is now enrolled at East Carolina as a junior. So we have a really great asset here in Currituck County, and it's all possible because of you guys and ladies, or you gentlemen and ladies, the funding that you do and the support that you give to the college. It's very integral to our success, and we thank you for that. And tonight I brought Dr. Weineger, who I brought here, I guess it's been about a little over, not quite a year ago, as our new president at College of the Albemarle. And Dr. Weineger would like to just share a little bit of information with you all about what's going on, and also express his thanks to you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Robert Weineger?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Robert Weineger. Address is 906 Broomfield Trail, Elizabeth City. The last time I spoke before this crowd, or last time I stood before you, I took advantage of my time to introduce myself as the new president of College of the Albemarle and to talk about the value of a community college education. Tonight I will touch on where COA is now and where we plan to be in the near future. Let's start with enrollment. There are two ways the college looks at enrollment. One is head count, and head count, we're measuring basically our mission fulfillment. It's the number of lives that the college has directly impacted. The other is full-time equivalent, or FTE, and that is the state's measure of the amount of work the college has done, and it directly determines our state funding for the next year. For all of COA, college-wide, the curriculum head count for fall of 17 and spring of 18 is up by 5% over this time last year, and FTE is up 3.4%. Now, those are really good numbers when you look statewide because the rest of the community college system as a whole appears to be down this year. COA is serving more students, which helps us fulfill our mission, and hopefully will positively impact our state budget for next year as well correspondingly. For Currituck County in particular, curriculum head count at Ratsie in fall of 17 and spring of 18 is 314 students, and that could still grow just a bit over summer. That compares to 95 students in fall of 2013, 2014, when that facility opened, and 263 for all of last year. And that means without the additional head count that could come in summer, Ratsie is already up by over 20% compared to this time last year. Clearly, there is demand for higher education in Currituck County, and COA is delighted that we have the opportunity to work with the county to meet that demand. Going back to college-wide enrollment for just a moment, last year, Currituck surpassed Dare County as the second-largest provider of students by curriculum head count to COA. Currently, Pasquotank provides 25% of COA's curriculum head count, Currituck provides 21%, and Dare 20%. In terms of new programs for the college, we have two new programs we're looking at. The first is an associate of science degree in agribusiness, and that's currently under review by our regional accrediting agency. We are pushing hard to have that program open this fall, and it's designed as a transfer program with North Carolina State University. The second is an associate's in emergency medical services, is also under review. As I've talked with other county commissioners, the need for an expanded EMS program is the one constant that I've heard from every county, and COA is happy to be moving to meet that request. There are two construction projects on the Elizabeth City campus that I will mention briefly because they are college-wide and not just for the campus, and I'm running out of time.
No, you're not. Just keep going. You're fine.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
That was for Paul's purposes only.
I appreciate the time. Thank you. First of all, is a renovation of our Performing Arts Center's lobby. That is essentially complete. There are a couple of small items left on the punch list that the architect has to sign off on, but other than that, we're done with that renovation. Our first performance in the renovated Performing Arts Center will be Beauty and the Beast, and that's scheduled for the last two weekends in April. Bring your children or your grandchildren or whatever you have, and come on down and see us. We'd appreciate it. The second is the main library, which is now in the demolition phase. The entire library building will be basically gutted and started all over again from scratch. We'll be looking for a more modern look and operation. The expansion of technology in education has changed the way that libraries look and function, and by the end of this calendar year, our library will be able to be prepared to meet that challenge. Finally, let me reiterate COA's profound gratitude for Currituck County's continuing support of post-secondary education. The growth in enrollment and the educational opportunities for our students that are happening here would not be possible without your support. My staff and I are excited about the future of higher education that we see in Currituck, and the addition of the Public Services Building will allow COA to continue to meet local student demand for some time to come. Wrote this down, but I didn't originally type this, so I'm going to go with it anyway. When I wrote that last sentence out, and I talked about the future of higher education in Currituck, I didn't originally write it that way. Originally, I wrote it about possibilities for the future, and I went back and changed it to say, no, it's the future. The reason I changed that is with COA's commitment and the county's support and the growth that we anticipate in this area, the future of higher ed in Currituck is not just about possibilities. It's not what-ifs, it's not maybes. Good things are already happening here now, and to me, it's a given that good things are going to continue to happen here. Appreciate your time. If there are any questions I can answer, I'd be glad to do so.
I'd like to thank you. First of all, back about a year ago, Commissioner Payment began working with the Board of Education on some vocational items for students that may not go to college for a four-year degree. And I sit on the board of the COA, and Mike reached out to me, and with your help and the other board and the college itself, you guys met with our Board of Education to help them work through some of the logistics of this vocational training that they're trying to do, which cut a lot of time off of what they would have to do to try to reinvent the wheel, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for what you're doing with the Basic Law Enforcement Building in the Future, and the fact in talking that they can get college credit for some of these classes that they attend. I think it means a lot to those in law enforcement, those that'll be also there for the fire training, but also for the vocational kids that are in our high schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further comments? Thank you, Dr. Weineger.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up for public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to speak this evening? And with that, I will close the public comments, and I'll move on to commissioner reports. I will start with Commissioner Hall.
None of us time.
Commissioner White?
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Etheridge?
I did want to say that it's hard to believe, but election season is upon us. One-stop absentee voting by mail started today. This is a good time also, if you haven't checked your voter registration, if you've moved or had a name change, you need to take care of that, and voter registration deadline is April the 13th. Our one-stop voting starts Thursday, April the 19th, and runs through Saturday, May the 5th. And the primary is May the 8th.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. With that, I will go to Commissioner Beaumont.
Why, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, myself, Commissioner Payment, and Commissioner Gilbert had the opportunity, actually, I'll go way back. In our email, we got an invitation to come to the White House to meet with the Intergovernmental Affairs Office of President Trump's administration, and, you know, personally, you know, yeah, and send money to Nigeria and everything will be fine. And so, in fact, we got emails that said this is in fact an accurate invitation to come to the White House. So, the three of us traveled up Tuesday. We met with NACO, which is the National...
Association of Counties.
Association of Counties? Okay, so, good. We met with them Tuesday night, where they basically gave us the lay of the land. Wednesday, toured the east wing of the White House, and then Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Wednesday afternoon, we spent about four hours in briefings with various members of President Trump's administration. The highlights were a guest visit by Vice President Pence, Ben Carson, and Kellyanne Conway. So, part of what NACO prepped us with on Tuesday night was, if you have an issue, they couched us with, or coached us to, make sure you bring it up and you go public with it because that's how you can get things fixed or changed. So, as the briefing kicked off on Wednesday, Billy Kirkland kind of was the master ceremonies for the event, and his comment to us was, you know, their purpose, and we were the 21st state to have all of the county commissioners invited to go to the White House, and his counsel to us is, here's where President Trump's focus of trying to get the government out of the way between the federal government and the counties, right, the citizenry, you know, let's get the obstructions to getting progress taken care of. And so, we used that opportunity to bring a bunch of issues forward. Many people are aware, we've been trying to get, well, let me back up. The Army Corps of Engineers permitted us to build the boat basin at the Whalehead Club, and that's a great feature to the county. There's only one small problem, you can't get boats to the boat basin at the Whalehead Club. So, I used that opportunity. We had exhausted working through the Army Corps of Engineers out of Wilmington, and so we used that as an opportunity to do an end-around and go direct to the presidential administration. So, there, I think...
There was some question?
Yes. He's the guy.
Dearborn.
Yes, Mr. Dearborn was the guy. He is the Deputy Assistant to Vice President Pence of Affairs. So, he, you know, he asked for questions, and boy, we gave it to him. So, there were two things that I brought up. One of them was the opening the channel to the Whalehead Club, and the other one was filling in the potholes that are designated wetlands in the Corrova Beach area. So, you know, the Army Corps, for whatever reason, has decided what they've decided, and I think we viewed this as our best bet at trying to get something that's clearly a overreach by the Army Corps to get it fixed. So, I remain guardily optimistic that we might actually get some traction. I think, and, you know, I know Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Hannig, and Commissioner White actually met with the Army Corps of Engineers and the stone wall that they have become, and I think this is our best shot at getting some of these things fixed. So, very encouraging trip. I am really optimistic that we may actually get some stuff taken care of. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
And to concur with what Commissioner Beaumont said, meeting with the top people that we met with in Washington, we were told by Mr. Dearborn and a couple others that one of the topics that we have been working on is getting broadband in rural areas, and we've been told that they will guarantee by June of 2018 that all of the school systems in North Carolina will have broadband. At the latest, it will be the summer of 19. And that right there is, I mean, to hear that come from the federal office to talk about broadband in rural areas, of course, they're not going to have it all the way to the mountains area of North Carolina, and probably not all the way to Gibbs Woods, but we are working on getting that there. But it was encouraging, and I was just overwhelmed. It's an opportunity of a lifetime to most people to even get to the White House and tour it. It wasn't my first time, but it was fun to see my colleagues get all excited about touring the White House, and then having our meeting in the west wing was pretty exciting. We were like kids in a candy store on the way back, talking about all of the encouragement that we've gotten, and it just solidifies that our federal government is working for us. Believe it or not, you don't see that on the news, but it's happening. So, I think the citizens of Currituck, this is the first trip to DC that I've taken as a board member for almost six-hour meeting with, and gaining contacts and meeting the persons for these agencies. So, and we've got email addresses, telephone numbers to get directly to them. So, yeah, and it was just an excellent opportunity, and I really feel that we're going to be able to move Currituck and North Carolina forward because of that.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Commissioner Payment?
I'll follow up exactly with Commissioner Beaumont and Commissioner Gilbert. The meeting we had there was very informative for us, and it was the first time that the administration up in DC had directly invited the local government to reach out to them and to let them know that they were instructed to start working directly with local government and trying to get down to the needs. And it was enlightening to hear too, that they were also directed for every regulation that they come up with, they're directed to at a minimum takeaway too. So, they, I think they were like 28 or so regulations. The comment was made that there's some regulations out there in the federal government that have been out there 30, 40, 20 years that just don't make any sense anymore, and they're starting to just kind of eliminate those and trying to get it down to a very minimum, which that was encouraging. Another area that they talked about was, they've heard and they're very concerned about the CTE programs, the Career Technical Educational Programs. The federal government understands, and that administration understands, the need for the technical and vocational careers that we're heading towards. This economy, the way they want to grow it is going to demand more of that type of workforce, and they are committed to investing federal dollars into the CTE programs, down to the state levels to get them into the school systems. I know our school system in Currituck County here currently has a CTE program that starts in the sixth grade and works an individual up to get a career path for the ones that don't want to go four years, to get them started early. So, it was encouraging to hear that they've heard from school boards, they see the need for that, and there was a commitment on their part that we will see federal dollars going into the education of our students to get them into those careers, which I was excited because I own a heating and air conditioning company, and believe me, it's hard to find them, and I know COA is very a part of that as well with the program they offer. So, I'm looking for exciting things to come with that for our students because that's our future, and that's where our workforce is going to be, and that was good to hear from them. And then last, I'll just touch base with Kellyanne Conway did appear, and she really brought up the concerns in this country with the opioid epidemic. They see there's a big concern with that, and they are going to be committing a lot of resources to address that, try to attack that, and reduce that as much as possible, and try to get some houses and areas in place to help these people get off those and move them forward. So, again, it was informative, very good information for the commissioners that attended. It was more than I thought it was going to be, and I was happy I was going to attend, and I know the other commissioners here have had, they could have, I know they would have enjoyed it. But again, for the citizens, it was a well-worth trip, and I think you're going to be seeing some good things from our federal government.
Outstanding. Thank you, Commissioner Payment. I got to participate in Meals on Wheels last week again. It's always a pleasure to go out there and see our senior citizens who have given so much to Currituck, and it's great to be a part of a program like that. I know Stacy's going to talk about it in a few minutes, but, and I know I talk about it all the time, but the degree of volunteer-ism, if that's a word, is just off the chart in this county and in this region, and I'm very blessed to be a part of it and grateful to have that opportunity. So, if you get the opportunity, go out there, meet some of your senior citizens. It's a great time. Their faces light up like you would not believe when you show up. It's great to have a visit with them, and you get a lot more out of it than you put into it. So, take that opportunity and do that. And that's all I have, and with that, I will close commissioner comments, and we will move on to Senior Center Report. Ms. Stacy Joseph is the Senior Center Coordinator, and she will be giving that this evening.
Bobby did so well, I don't think I need to talk. All right. Each year, I try to give you a little update on what the year is before. When I took over at the back end of 2013, I started tracking attendance, and right now, the only way to track, I can't even speak, track attendance, because he's got a camera in my face, is by signatures. We have in our budget to purchase my senior center, which is a really neat program that will allow us not only to track attendance, but also by demographics and by programs, so we'll have a better view in the future of what programs are being used. It has the potential to eventually also do volunteer hours, month-end reports, it even can do an automated system to send out alerts in the future. So, I'll start off by Barco. We track it by signatures, like I said, and we had 9,951 signatures last year. That is about 400 less than 2016. It's the first year since I took over that it dropped just a hair. We're not sure why that is. You know, it can be a number of reasons. Barco is forever changing with population that's coming in through there. It could be, you know, people that have moved. Unfortunately, they've died, assisted living, nursing homes, and things like that. We're also noticing, even though it's a small trend, that people are more on the go. They're not utilizing the center the way they used to. You don't have people that are coming in and staying all day long. They're coming in, they're using the center for their program, and they're moving on. They're either watching grandkids, or they're still working, or they're moving on to their next activity. So, at some point, we're probably going to have to adjust the way that our senior population is going to be changing. They're definitely more active. In Barco, we serve 3,478 congregate meals. In 2017, for home-delivered meals, we served 5,467, which is crazy amount of meals. We had 133 new enrollment. Now, they come in, they fill out the paperwork, they may or may not come back, but that's how we track it. That was up from 2016, which was only 87. Pows Point and Knott's Island, now their changes are always more noticeable. They have a set number of people down there. You're not getting new people in or out. So, when somebody passes away, or they go from being in the center to assisted living or nursing home, it really can impact them. Pows Point had 2,290 signatures. They were dead-on with 2016, so they didn't gain or lose, which is good. They served 1,020 congregate meals, 3,955 home-delivered meals, and they had two new enrollments, which is up from 2016, which was one. Knott's Island had 1,700 signatures. It's about 600 less than 2016. Once again, they don't have new people moving in there. Their population is pretty much what it is. They served 1,157 congregate meals and 1,221 home-delivered meals, and they had four new enrollment. In 2016, that was eight. Now, I will say that we noticed throughout the year that we had lost more seniors than we had noticed in the previous years, and we don't normally track that. But we went back, we pulled up the file to see exactly how many people we lost in 2017 because we lost a lot of people in-house and home-deliver, and we lost 38 folks between all three sites. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it really is when you get to know the people, and you've lost 38 people that you're not seeing anymore. So, it definitely impacts. So it definitely impacts. With that being said, let's talk about outreach a little bit. We currently publish the newsletter that's combined at all three sites. We did that several years ago to make sure that everybody stayed on the same page. They all got the same information. They did not, they could understand they can go to any site that they want to go throughout the county, that they're not committed to one site, they can move around. We did that to cut costs and also to limit redundant information, because there was a lot of that. The newsletter is available at all the sites, through mail, through email, and on the county website. Currently, we mail two hundred and three newsletters and another four hundred and eighty via email. These include churches, doctors' offices, and other businesses as well. Folks can call us to sign up over the phone, or they can sign up on the website. They can also come in as well. Each month, I pick certain things to advertise on the county access channels, public signs, and additional flyers. Sometimes things make it into Facebook, or devils say, you want me to tweet that out? I'm not a tweeter, so I don't, I'm like, sure, go for it. Each quarter, I always place an article in the focus that goes out to every county resident. And the reason I say that is because we don't ever miss an opportunity to advertise in every way that we can. So the next time you hear somebody say, I don't know what a senior center is, or I've never heard of it, the information is out there. They have to be willing to read it. And a lot of times, people will say, oh, I don't read that, or, you know, I pass by that. No, I don't look at that. At some point, we've done all what we can do, as much as we can, and they've got to take some responsibility that the information is being provided for them, that they just have to take time to read it. And it's valuable stuff that they're missing out on. We increased our outreach in Powell's Point and Knott's Island locations last year by placing monthly Look What's Happening flyers out at specific locations. So I asked Tammy at Knott's Island, Lorraine at Powell's Point, to pick certain locations in their area where they thought it would be a good place to put follow-up flyers, just to kind of remind them. Powell's Point put out seventy flyers in six locations in 2017. Knott's Island put out eighty-four flyers in seven locations. So, and they keep track of that. Of course, I'm a spreadsheet queen, so they have been tracking all of that. Going to remind you a little bit on activities and programs. It is fifty-five to attend, sixty to eat. We offered a combined total of three hundred and twenty different activities in 2017 through all three sites. That is outside of special events and regular daily activities that are scheduled. We have transportation that can provide from ICPTA to the nutrition sites. We have congregate home-delivered meals. We have educational speakers, exercise programs, daily stuff such as puzzles, games, and card groups, indoor/outdoor activities, horseshoes outside, pickleball inside. I know y'all have heard of pickleball. We participate with the Albert Memorial Senior Games. We have day trips and occasionally a charter bus trip. We do AARP tax preparation, health screenings, quilting, sewing, craft, Wet Paint Society tops, chronic disease self-management programs, diabetes self-management programs, Tai Chi for arthritis, special classes on occasion, line dancing, yoga, and volunteer opportunities. We have programs and services that are partnershiped and overlap with Centerra Living, Albert Memorial Commission, social services, and so forth. We can also assist in referrals to outsized agencies such as EIC and Daybreak. If you have a senior center or senior-related question, we want you to call us, because if we don't have the answer, we can get you where you need to be. We kind of want to be that one-stop shop, and that's what we've been trying to promote. Corolla, in the summer of 2014, I started trying to offer some programming down there. We started with something simple, which was movies in the park. That was, it was horrible, great philosophy, but horrible with the mosquitoes that were like birds. It was just bad. But we did a lot of surveys, a lot of surveys and face-to-face contact down there. In 2015, we did an eight-week Tai Chi for arthritis class, and we did a fall day trip and more surveys. In 2016, we started once-a-week yoga, September through March. We did two-day trips, fall and spring, and we did senior games event at Wellhead Wednesdays. That was low attendance as well, so we didn't do that anymore. We did more surveys. 2017, we started twice-a-week yoga, September through March. We did two-day trips and surveys. Looking ahead in 2018, we're going to try to keep doing twice-a-week yoga, starting back in September 2018 and going through March of 2019. We'll do the two-day trips, and now we're going to try to incorporate some presentations down there. They've expressed interest in Medicare and financial speaking presentations, so we're working on that right now, and possibly we'll have one in May. 2019, we will look at year-round yoga, if that's a possibility. At, when we first started this, we said no because of the traffic. Their mindset has changed. They've become invested in the yoga, and now they don't want to give it up, and that's a great thing. So we will look at that and also possibly holding a social event down there, too. Every area is different. Everybody wants different things, so it's just a matter of figuring out what works for them. I'm also thinking about doing a six-to-eight-week chronic disease or diabetes class down there as well. That's funded through Albert Memorial Commission. I have spoken before about the twenty-year production for Currituck County and the aging population, and that Currituck County was going to be one of the biggest and fastest aging populations over the next twenty years. I actually attended a conference in Concord last Monday and Tuesday where they gave us state information. So even though that's not for here, it trickles down to us, so I'm going to give you a little bit of updates on what their challenges are on a state level and what their numbers are. The current challenges at the state level that are being focused on are the changing population demographics, healthcare reform, behavioral health strategic plan, opiate epidemic, social services reform, and Medicare. I'm going to focus on the population demographics that they gave us. North Carolina ranks ninth in total population. It ranks tenth in population age eighty-five and over, and it ranks ninth in population age sixty and over. In 2025, one in five North Carolina folks will be sixty-five plus. North Carolina's sixty-five population will increase from one point six million to two point six million in the next twenty years. By 2019, state is estimated to have more than sixty-plus than fewer than people that are eighteen. People seventy-five to eighty-four will be the fastest-growing population in the next two decades. And this is just a little extra blur that's going to lead into my next thing. Eighty-one percent of folks sixty-five and older have at least one chronic disease. Fifty-one percent had two or more, with heart disease and cancer being the leading cause of death. One hundred and sixty thousand have Alzheimer's, which is the fifth-leading cause of death. With that being said, I have been given the task to form a dementia task force for Currituck County. It is an initiative that's taken over this region, where they are trying to make every community dementia-friendly. The reason behind that is to make sure that the functioning folks that are still in our community, which they are, they're going to the banks, they're going to the stores, that people know how to interact with them, how to respond with them, and still give them the dignity that they deserve, and not to take advantage of them. So they're looking for key people out in the community, and I will be reaching out to people, again, because I tried to do this in December, and it was a bad time of year, to form this task force. The task force will look and see what needs to be done in Currituck County, what we're lacking, what services we may need, what facilities we may need, and then how to implement them, working with Planning Department and other county agencies. Our program may be a little different than the surrounding counties. Derrick County has an amazing program. They've got their hospital on board, they've got county officials, it's, but it's a different population. It's a different set down there. So ours will work a little differently, but we want to get that in place, because we want everybody to be able to be treated with kindness and function as long as they can in the community. A couple areas to mention for now. We are currently in the middle of free AARP taxes again. Last year, our volunteers served over two hundred and twenty folks. This year, they have added extra slots, so they are trying to get more people in there. They're really working hard to do that. Taxes are on Thursday by appointment only, and they're geared to low to middle income. They are open to the public regardless of age. We are currently almost booked up to the end, which is April thirteenth, I believe is the last day. So if anybody wants a tax appointment, they need to give us a call and see if we can get you in. Each year, we hold special events: Mother's Day Tea, Father's Day Breakfast, Fourth of July Picnic, Senior Health and Wellness Day, our volunteer banquet, and so on. I just want to check, touch on a couple from last year. Our Senior Health and Wellness Day saw almost ninety seniors with seventeen vendors. I change up the vendors each year. I keep some the same and change up. Last year was county focus, and I had many departments from the county that came out and was able to answer questions for our community. And it's a great thing, because they don't really realize what you do. You know, so I always get real questions, and it was a good opportunity to bring out different departments, and they meet with them. Our 2017 volunteer banquet invited over a hundred and fifty-two volunteers, who had logged more than three thousand three hundred and fifty hours of service, with about eighty-five of them in attendance, not counting staff or additional guests. We had several Board of Commissioners attend. It's always a highlight of the year to be able to recognize our volunteers, because everything we do, whether it's home-delivered meals, or bingo, or helping in the kitchen, we depend on our volunteers. Upcoming, we have pickleball senior games tournament at Parks and Rec and the Gym, April the eleventh, starting at nine AM. It is too late to register, but you're welcome to come out and support and watch our seniors play pickleball. If you've never experienced pickleball, it's a great way to come out and see the madness. I call it the madness, because it really is. They have a great time, so come out and support that. Our annual Spring Social with the Chamber is coming up. It is going to be at Sanctuary Vineyards like it is every year. It's on April fourteenth, at seven o'clock. It's partnership with the Chamber and the Corolla Wild Horse and the Senior Nutrition, and we get a, I can't even speak now again. We get a portion of the proceeds, and they're divided up between us. There's a silent auction, in addition to great music and food. Tickets are sixty dollars, including tax per person, and they can be purchased through me, or the Chamber, or the Wild Horse Museum store. Okay, I'm at the back end. I'm done, almost. I fear with the audio, not being here, I could just take both sessions. All right, I wanted to thank a couple people. I wanted to say, I have an amazing staff. I like to get up here and at least publicly say I have amazing staff. You're only as good as your staff, and they are great. And they try really hard to make sure volunteers are always in place for the home-delivered, and sometimes last minute, you know, volunteer cancels, and we have to go out and do that, too. I wanted to mention a couple things that I felt like were worth mentioning. Not, Tammy at Knott's Island started a weight loss group back in the end of 2017. She had monthly meetings, discussed healthy eating choices, exercise, and set goals. Five folks committed to the process and lost thirty-five pounds meeting their first goal. They continue to set new goals for exercise, weight loss, and healthy eating. They're on, they're well on their way to meeting the next goal of flying colors. I am very proud that she has found something that works for their group of people and has made it into a successful program. So I just wanted to say that they're always trying really hard to work outside of that box and figure out what meets their folks' needs. Another thing is, we recently added a home-delivered route in Grandi. We do not do waiting lists, as you know, and our route in Grandi was full, so we had to make a new one, so we could add some more people. Volunteers are hard to come by, even on a daily basis. Lorraine at Powell's Point was able to find enough volunteers to cover Monday through Friday for an entire month. So she made up an entire new route, got it done in about a two-month span, which is amazing. So we were able to serve all those extra people. In addition to that, throughout the year, we work with, you know, planning, extension, and EMS, and Parks and Rec, and everybody is always wonderful. They've always given support and help in any way they can, and sometimes we partner up on different programs. So if I've left anybody out, I'm sorry. I would like to point out, as you were talking about home-delivered meals, that I really appreciate all the support for the March for Meals this year. In case y'all didn't know, the Board of Commissioners pretty much have all agreed to do March for Meals. That is amazing, and I can't say how awesome it is to let Albert Memorial Commission know that Currituck stepped up to the plate, because I know there's other counties that have not. So it makes me feel good, and it makes me go, hey, I'm amazing. I don't know if that's true or not, but I thought, wow, okay, that is it. Any questions?
You are amazing.
Oh, well, thank you.
Absolutely amazing, yeah.
I paid him a little bit to say that.
Right. And it isn't that y'all do so many things, it's the attitude and the dedication you show every day that I'm there. It just, it blows my mind every time I go in there.
Thank you.
And to you and your staff, it's just kudos. Thank you.
Good.
Any further comments?
Maybe tomorrow.
Moving on to public hearing in action. PB eighteen dash zero four, Ocean Atlantic Rentals, request for a use permit for light vehicle rentals. The property is six point eight acres and is located eleven fifty-nine Austin Street, one oh three A, Corolla Light Town Center, Tap Map, Tax Map, one fifteen B, parcel two PB two B, something like that, Poplar Branch Township. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this, if we can get everyone sworn in?
Yes, I was going to say, this is a use permit, so it will need to be sworn in. So anyone that would like to speak to this would probably need to come forward.
Could put your hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go through a little background on this case. This is for a use permit for low-speed vehicles, and any vehicle sales or rentals requires a use permit by our ordinance. This is for, the location of the property is the Corolla Town Center, located on Ocean Trail in Austin. It is in the PUD of Corolla Light. And it is considered mixed use. So Ocean Atlantic Rentals has requested a use permit for the rental, sales, and light repair of eight low-speed vehicles. Low-speed vehicles are required to be registered, insured, and insured and may be operated only on streets and highways where the posted speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour. General, by general statute, low-speed vehicles must be equipped with headlamps, stoplamps, turn signals, tail lamps, reflect, reflectors, reflectors, parking brakes, rearview mirrors, windshield, windshield wipers, speedometer, seat belts, and a vehicle identification number. Because of this definition, it falls under vehicle sales or rental, because they're treated as vehicles. Ocean Atlantic Rentals, they do other rentals, mopeds and similar things, so they're requesting to be able to add low-speed vehicles to their rental menu. So this is a picture of a low-speed vehicle. They have seat belts, they have brake lights, and this is also some of their instructions within the, within the low-speed vehicles. So the Technical Review Committee reviewed this, and they do recommend adoption of this use permit, subject to the following conditions, that the applicant is showing, shall install the required Type A landscaping buffer between the proposed low-speed vehicle display areas and the adjacent streets. And that's what this site plan right here, the yellow areas, are areas that they've designated for storage and display of the low-speed vehicles in the Corolla Town, Corolla Light Town Center. Another condition that the Technical Review Committee suggests is that no more than eight low-speed vehicles should be displayed or stored on the property at any given time, and the onsite repair and service shall be limited to airing up tires, airing up tires, checking the tire pressure, condition of the seat belts, mirrors, and hardware that secures the roof to the LSV. The engine alignment and tire work and any other major repairs to the low-speed vehicles should be, must be performed off-site. At this point, I could go through the use permit standards. At this point, I could go through the use permit standards. Do you have any questions for me about the site, or the low-speed vehicles themselves?
Can you back up to the picture of the vehicle?
Yes.
I'm looking for the headlamp. I know this picture is one.
That's not the right picture. That's a regular golf cart. I've seen that they have a red one that's all decked out, but, Ms. LaCicero, with the plat you had up there, the Corolla Light Town Center?
Yes.
The yellow highlighters, are those the proposed areas for storage of extra vehicles? Is that what the yellow highlights, like one out front, which is right beside my shop?
Yes, these are the parking spots that the applicant and the property owner have, my last indication, have come to an agreement on, that these are going to be used for storage and display.
Okay.
There is ample parking on the site.
We've got an extra 25 or 30 spots.
Currently, 275 total parking spots provided on-site, and the total parking for the required, for existing and the proposed uses, 256. So there's ample parking at this location.
I had a question on the concealment. You said they would be covered in their parking spot? What is the yellow highlight?
No, they've just been designated. They're going to be...
Just open parking?
Just open parking. Yeah, just like your car.
Okay.
Ms. LaCicero, the type of vehicles that they're going to be renting, would they be also used, or could they be used for beach driving as well?
I'm not saying someone wouldn't take them out on the beach, but that is not the intent. It wouldn't go very far.
No.
There's not four-wheel drive. They're golf carts, and I think have a little bit extra oomph, and with some extra safety features, a little extra speed, and extra safety features, is my understanding.
So being motor vehicles, they'll be on the street and not sidewalks and to that sort, correct?
They should be driven on the streets. They are for 35 or less, and that would be the intent.
We hope.
We hope.
Well, let's go back to that, then. A multi-use path, they're prohibited from the multi-use path?
I don't say pedestrian. That's correct. We don't...
Make sure that...
We don't allow motor vehicles on our multi-use paths.
They would adhere to the same rules as a motor vehicle, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, whether they, there would be some enforcement, of course.
Right. And is the total eight? Is that the intention, to just have eight?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
That'll be a question to defer to the applicant once they start.
Okay.
The way I read this, and I'm not sure for you or for him, it says that they'll be used only in the 35 and less areas, so they won't be down at the south end of the county, riding around in the 45 mile-an-hour zone? Is that correct?
Correct. They should only be allowed by general statute at 35 or less...
That's correct.
Miles per hour.
And during the summer, I believe the whole speed limit is 35.
Right.
Pretty much, yeah. Just one more.
And I have an insurance question, but I'm not sure, again, which person I should direct that at.
They are required to be registered and insured, and if you had something more specific, I would suggest you...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. LaCicero. Would the applicant like to speak now? Thank you, sir. If you could state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Chris Merrick. I'm a part-owner and general manager of Ocean Atlantic Rentals. For the record, I reside at 1206 West Kitty Hawk Road, Kitty Hawk. We have several locations in Darrin-Currituck counties, but we are proudly a Currituck-based business with our main office at 107 Shores Avenue, Inpoint Harbor, and we, in the town center, do lease multiple store locations. You know I'm here today applying for the LSV permit. I just want you to know that we have been renting vacation gear out of that store location in the town center since 87. My company began renting the LSV carts last year across the Outer Banks. In Corolla, we certainly misunderstood and treated these as regular golf carts in Corolla last year. They are not, and I'm here today, obviously, to correct that wrong. We did have a great summer renting them last year with lots of positive feedback from our customers, and thankfully, zero complaints from the Currituck law enforcement. I did want to just appreciate the planning board staff and our Commissioner Bob, our neighbor up there, for helping us through this process. A little history, non-street legal, regular golf carts have been available in Corolla for rental for some time now. The negative there is they're only legal to be driven on private PUD roads. Several of the PUDs do not allow golf carts, and namely, our neighbors at Corolla Light, for example, do not allow regular golf carts, but they do allow LSV golf cart rentals on their roads. Even though the price is nearly double of a regular golf cart for us to buy an LSV, when I began researching golf cart rentals for my company, I quickly chose the LSV model over the regular old golf cart for really two main reasons. And the first is the safety features. These carts are inspected and registered each year by a mechanic, just like your own car or truck is. When I personally think of putting my wife and kids in a golf cart on the roads, you know, you better believe it's going to have seat belts, it's going to have lights, and the other safety features that were read tonight. I'll skip rereading that, of course. In addition to those features, these carts do carry a North Carolina license plate and registrations, so they're identifiable and most certainly ticketable by law enforcement. They are not allowed on any multi-use trail, I think we've stated that. Although the North Carolina law says anyone can drive an LSV over 18, my company only rents those to 21-year-old drivers and older. We require their auto vehicle insurance when we do an online lease with them. The second reason that these are really the right choice for our company is consistency, and we have stores up and down from Hatteras Island up to Corolla. And when we contemplated putting our 150K-plus investment in this program, it's because these golf carts are usable in all areas. They're the only golf carts that meet state LSV standards regardless of the town or the county. We are renting these carts responsibly. In your packet, I know there was a copy of the waiver, insurance coverage. We require that of renters, and we carry our own insurance. Several other elements we've added also to rent these safely, and these include the decals you saw on the white golf cart that is an LSV. It does have a headlamp. We have instructional YouTube videos that are emailed and texted to our renters, and we've been really proactive in creating the safety features to let folks know how to use these appropriately. I think you all understand, these are legal where the speed limit's 35 and not, and I just wanted you to be rest assured that these are not usable on four-wheel-drive beaches, and they're just not powered to do so. Lastly, they are environmentally friendly, and these are electric, and they plug into standard outlets, so they're not a gas or diesel engine. I think it's great for our community to be embracing electric vehicles at this time. In closing, I believe these are ideal for the Corolla area. You're all aware that from the four-wheel-drive ramp south, the speed limit's 35 Memorial Day to Labor Day. So that whole area is in compliance with what the state of North Carolina says about LSVs. Our customers have reported back, they've been able to park the family Suburban for much of the week, and use their golf cart to travel to and from the beach, even shop around and spend some money in our county. Folks are using these carts to assist families going to and from the beach, sometimes transporting elderly or those with disabilities to the beach. I can tell you, as a dad firsthand, every dad we talk to appreciates these, getting all their beach stuff and kid stuff to the beach every day, especially if they're not staying on the oceanfront. Thank you for considering us. With me today is Colby Frida, he's our Corolla store manager who lives there, and Greg Wills, he's been guiding us with the legalities and the insurance process. I've asked them to be here so that we can answer everything with you tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Merrick, what's the top speed?
Top speed is 25 miles per hour. A regular golf cart, sir, is 20 and under, and, yeah.
Awesome. Question I wanted to point out, and the only thing I would suggest is, in addition to the sign that you had in there, was making people aware that they can't use them on a road over 35. For instance, now, the speed limit's 45, and much of Corolla just is an extra reminder to them.
Yes, sir.
But, other than that, that's it.
And then I have one, it's our page 21, number three, about the insurance.
Yes, sir.
Now, I understand you look at their insurance when they come in for their vehicle. Does it have a rider on there that says, any vehicle they're driving, that they're covered? In other words, I know if I rent a car in my insurance, but, you know, your LSV, I mean, is that covered under most insurance policies for cars?
It's under most, yeah. I mean, I think like the county, most vehicle companies that we're talking to now consider this a state motor vehicle. So I'm not going to say it's every single company. We've had some back and forth with customers as they fill out our online waiver, and some have said, you know, this is inapplicable. We are certainly insuring them in-house as well to cover that gap, you know, because it is, it's a new market. All this electric vehicle stuff is relatively new.
Okay, you're saying you're covering it in-house just in case?
Yes, sir.
Because I see the part where it says you're not responsible or anything.
That's right.
That's my concern in this, is that somebody hits, you know, one of our kids or another car, and they go, oh, my insurance isn't covering it, you'll have to sue me. I don't want to hopefully see that, and if you're...
Yes, sir. We're through the American Rental Association, insuring them in-house as well. We do, just like when I rent a bike or anything, let folks know it's their responsibility while they're using it, but we carry insurance as a company, and we require them to be an insured driver.
Well, then, I appreciate that, because that shows that you all are really thinking. Thank you.
Yes, sir. If I may just add, we also, when they fill out that online form, it's the same form that someone uses to go to Van's Skate Park, so it's a pretty neat release form for the day we're living in. It allows two additional drivers at that time. Sometimes that's a question as well, so just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Mike, to vibrate on that, since I've had a rental business for a few years, usually in these cases, their insurance policy in this case would be, they sit second seat. So they go after the renters' policy first if there's an accident, and if that fails, it falls back on yours. And I've actually had an accident with a car where they hit somebody else in the parking lot in that exact situation, so it's a pretty good redundant system.
Sounds like he's already looked into it, and I do appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wills, looks like he wants to say something.
He wants to get in on it.
Good job. Y'all are hitting the right topics. You said everything right, and that's why I was here.
Mr. Wills, he's doing a great job. Don't mess it up.
Right, right.
Any further questions for Mr. Merrick?
Uh-uh.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. I don't currently have anyone to speak to the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this topic? With that, I will close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve. Check, I got the right sheet here. I'm going to approve PB 18-04 Ocean Atlantic Rentals' Use Permit with Staff Recommendations. And that adds a Type A buffer between display areas and adjacent streets. No more than eight low-speed vehicles shall be displayed or stored on the property at any time, and the onsite repair service shall be limited to the aforementioned washing, checking tires, and basic safety measures for the vehicles. Let's see here. I guess I need to go through and... Use will not endanger the public health or safety because the models are clean, energy-efficient, safe and easy to operate. OAR guides renters on the best places to drive them, and there are warnings and regulations posted on every LSV. When not rented, they will be kept in designated parking spots. These spots have been determined by OAR and the property owner, so they will not negatively affect other businesses of the town center experience. LSVs will not use essential parking spots in adequate parking that is available on-site. They will not injure the adjoining value or budding lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, because the rentals are in harmony with other businesses in the town center and with Ocean Atlantic Rentals. The use will operate from an existing business in an established shopping center. I think I covered it all.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Just one. Commissioner White, did you need to add that comment you made earlier about the speed limit?
Yes, and that the applicant will add a decal of some sort to the inside of the vehicle to let the renters know to not go on any streets over 35 miles per hour. Thank you.
I'll second that additional comment.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, public hearing in action. PB 18-03 Fun in the Sun Dune Buggy Rentals, request for a use permit for light vehicle rentals. The property is 2.32 acres and is located at 8754 Carrot Oak Highway, Harbinger Tax Map 131, parcels 109, 110, and 111, Poplar Branch Township. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero, and whoever is going to speak with this, if you could come up to be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another use permit for vehicle rentals. The property in question is located in Harbinger, next to Carolina Designs. This, I think, is the old Pokewalt construction area. See, it is 2.92 acres, and it is zoned general business. And it would be all three of these properties that would need to get the use permit, because in just a second, you'll understand.
So it's the whole building?
So it's all three of these properties that would be getting the use permit. The main building is located right here on this one. They need the access from this property right here in the middle, and display area for the property with the street frontage right here. So you see the adjoining property, and the majority of it is general business of the properties, but to the rear of these properties, the single-family, this lighter yellow, and agriculture. It is in limited service in the land use plan classification. So let me go through some of this. So the applicant is requesting a use permit to allow dune buggy rentals in the general business zoning district. The request right now includes rental for four vehicles with plans to expand to a maximum of six. The applicant is also requesting a display pad up here at the front, which is why all three of the properties are included under this one owner, Odyssey Partners. The applicant is requesting, I heard my mouse go, a 10 by 20 concrete display pad, and then also a 16 by 20 concrete handicap pad. On this display pad, they could house up to two vehicles, and because of that, the display along the highway, they would have to do a Type A landscaping buffer, just like the other rental, Ocean Atlantic Rentals would have to do between their display area and the adjoining street. Then the vehicles are not rented, they will be stored inside, and some of these accessory buildings to the rear, any outdoor storage of vehicle other than those on the display pad will require site plan and a fully opaque screening in accordance with the UDO. There is public water, but they're all on septic. The technical review committee recommends adoption of this use permit with the following conditions. The Type A landscaping buffer is required in front of the display pad, and the site will be, shall be improved according to the proposed site plan, including the landscaping, the display pad, and the concrete handicap pad. We also recommend the conditions that the vehicle storage shall occur within an enclosed building, will be fully screened from site in accordance with the UDO and revised site plan. No more than six vehicles shall be available for rent at any given time. Onsite repair and service shall be limited to washing the buggies, airing up tires, checking tire pressure, condition of seat belts, mirrors, and other safety features. Any heavier vehicle maintenance will be required to be off-site, and there shall be no more than two vehicles on the display pad at any given time. The applicant is, once again, requesting dune buggy rentals. The applicant is once again requesting dune buggy rentals with a display pad up front and the handicap parking pad. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
So, just to be clear, I might be a little confused. There's going to be a display up front, but it has to be buffered?
It does, a Type A, which includes more low landscaping, but yes, it does have to be buffered.
So you can't see it?
So you can see some of it.
Okay.
And this would be the same...
Making sure I was clear.
Yeah.
You know, I'm a little slow sometimes.
We do have two aggregate caliper canopy trees, and some understory trees, and three shrubs, and they can place those so that they can maximize the viewing of the display pad.
Okay.
Now, I know for the used cars and car lots that we have in the county, they get kind of close to the road when they display them. For new businesses, we're also allowing them to be this close to the road where it's not already grandfathered in, or is that...
Well, that would just be the display pad, so yes, they could get this close to the road. We do allow them to get pretty close to the road. Once again, this is the display pad and not a building.
It may not quite be the time to get into it, but you brought up an interesting point, that you got midget down the street with no buffer whatsoever, and we're making people block some of their wares, and at the same time, we have to do some of that so that you don't see all their junk. It's, I don't know, just an observation at this point, but...
Probably midget's been there for a while.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, that grandfathered or something else.
Right. So these are going to be actual dune buggies, is that correct? Or what we commonly refer to as dune buggies?
That's my understanding that, yes, they're going to be dune buggies.
And you said they've got all three of these lots, is that correct? Or what was the configuration again of the lots?
Okay, I mean, because they're going to be using all three of these lots, it's owned by the same owner, Odyssey Partners, and it's in the LSA Odyssey Partners, which, like I said, this was Pokewalt Walt Construction Building, right? But because they're using pieces of all three of these lots, which is...
Gotcha.
They all three have to have this use permit applied to it. Just the configuration, unfortunately for the applicant, the configuration of these lots does not, they can't get their pad, the display pad, on just one of these lots. So all three of these lots would have this use permit applied to them.
So there are other businesses that are working in there as well, correct?
Yeah, I think there's a roofing company in there now, and this may be something the applicant may know about, but this is, I know there's been a couple of businesses, like Twisted Loft was there, and then there was another tarnish, but a consignment, couple of consignment stores that have been in there over the last two years or so. So, yeah, there are currently other businesses in that property.
So the parking on-site, would it allow for more vehicles to be added at some future point if they wanted to amend the use permit?
They would have to come back before you and ask. The two, they have two on the display pad.
Right. And then the other, well, the other ones are going inside, but I'm just, if the place would support more is my question down the road, if the business is a great success and we want to add 20 dune buggies, you know, is that something that could happen at this site?
It could. If they could not have all the, they couldn't store everything inside.
Right.
They would have to submit a site plan. First of all, they have to come back and ask, because we're setting the number at six right now, but then they would have to submit a site plan and have fully opaque screening for anything not on the display pad or not indoors.
Okay.
And are the vehicles off-road, or are they for the street?
They are street legal. That means they can pull out of here and drive on Carrot Talk Highway at a speed of 55, and it's a dune buggy in and of its name. I would assume it'd go off-road, but it can go on paved road and go to the off-road.
Well, I grew up with the day that a dune buggy was for the off-road areas. Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
How will the, and this may be for the applicant, actually, it may be, is there any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? And with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant. If you could state your name for the...
My name is Scott McDowell. I live at 282 Hillcrest Drive in Kitty Hawk.
Thank you. I had a question, if they're going to be going to the off-road, are we accommodating for parking passes, or how do we navigate through that?
That's something that's been, something my partners and I have been talking about, and we want them legal, so if we have to purchase parking passes for the vehicles, that's something we would be doing.
Okay, so you would purchase a parking pass for each vehicle, or would you require your renter to do that?
We would purchase those, and then we would have to obviously include that into our business costs.
Okay.
So, well, we've asked, you heard a couple of us ask about dune buggy, so is this a Myers-Manske on a Volkswagen chassis? What exactly are you proposing to have out here?
They're Volkswagen-powered dune buggies. Some of them are, they're the Myers-Manske style. You've got to be careful, I don't want to get in trademark problems or anything this evening, but that's the style of the buggy, yes.
Okay, and they'll seat what, two to four people?
They're four and five passenger vehicles.
Okay. And have you, you heard from the previous applicant about insurance, have you looked into all that stuff at this point and moved through that?
Our plan is to work with US Choice Auto Rental Systems, based in Valley Forge, Pennsylvania. They offer insurance to rental car companies. That would be in a similar manner as the previous, you know, where we request the owner's insurance. We have our own insurance, and then we also offer insurance to be purchased for day of use.
Okay. And Mr. Hanig asked about the parking permits, but so the intent is for these things to be utilized to go up on the four-wheel-drive beaches either in Kirk Talk or Dare County?
Our intent is for the people to have an open-air experience on the Outer Banks in the car. We've been putting together some maps and driving. One of the locations is Carova Beach, but we would also encourage them, Nag's Head Woods, down to Oregon Inlet, Pea Island, Alligator River Wildlife Refuge. We want people just to be able to get the fun, open-air experience on the Outer Banks.
Okay. And I'm sorry, did you want to give a presentation? We just started asking you questions.
No, that's okay. I'd much rather hear your thoughts than you have to deal with mine.
Well, sell us your business.
Yes.
I might be interested in coming down and renting a dune buggy.
The Shark Tank pitch here, then?
Some of your vision, what's...
Shark Tank. Our goal is to give families the opportunity to enjoy the Outer Banks in a safe, fun, open-air vehicle. And the vehicle's a VW dune buggy. It's the kind of dune buggy we've seen maybe, you know, in our 60s and 70s television shows. Their setup is four or five passenger vehicles, but we've put a few modern pieces into them: modern disc brakes, flotation tires, seat belts for each passenger, and a motor that's with a governor on it, so that there's some safety involved. We'll be renting to people 26 and older for daytime use only. We think that's, the goal is with family use of the vehicles. We'd rather have families in the vehicles enjoying themselves out on the Outer Banks than renting them to someone younger that might have less than noble pursuits in mind.
Maturity and more driving habits.
Yes.
Not me.
I think he was referring to Commissioner Etheridge over there.
Right.
Well, we'd ask you that you bring your children, or, you know, or maybe some younger family members, so that you might, you know, have more safety involved in your pursuits. But that's what our goal is, is we really, we think that's our target market, is a person with two or three children and want to have just a day in the sun with a dune buggy. Something you can experience in most other locations, pretty unique to us here in the Outer Banks.
And a safety concern that I have is, is there a limit on the age of children that you'll allow in an open-air vehicle?
Well, we don't have that, but they're not equipped to support a car seat with a tether in it, so we really don't, we want them, so I would probably need to do some research on that, but we really don't want anyone that cannot be comfortably belted in with a seat belt.
And are they...
They would.
No. And are they...
They would.
Yeah, they would. Are they...
Every day, I go, can my kid ride on my lap? Every day.
Are there daily or weekly rentals, or both?
Daily rentals.
Daily rentals. Okay.
Mr. McDowell, you had made a comment that you can have governors on the motors. What's going to be the maximum speed of these things?
Well, they're all going to be, they're all fairly unique individuals. The top speed would be between 55 and 60 miles an hour on them, with a governor, put the governor on them, mechanical governor. The other piece of it is these are manual transmission dune buggies, and we're, you know, we're going to be pretty upfront about that. If you can't drive a manual transmission or aren't comfortable with the manual transmission, probably don't want to rent one of ours and practice on ours.
Oh, yes, they will.
Oh, yes, they will. Ask me how many clutches I went through.
Here, can I get back on one?
Right, okay. Any further questions for the applicant? With that, I'll hand it, I will open the public hearing. I do not...
Thank you.
I do not have anyone signed up for the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask to continue this to our next meeting. I'd like a little more time to think about it before we move forward with it. Let me talk to staff a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that, because I'm the same thing with the questions that you have as far as the configuration of the property. I would like a little more time to, now that we've had some presentation on it, to the second meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non, motion passes unanimously. That will be moved on to the first meeting in April. Thank you. Moving on to new business, consent agenda?
Message for approval.
Any discussion?
I have a question, if I could, with respect on page 76, rabies shots at the county clinic. They used to be free. I see where it says $10 now. I'm just curious, am I reading that right, or maybe it's my eyesight? I think it's on page 76, somewhere in there.
That is an area that's not being proposed to change. All we'll bring in to you is to add the parking pass fees in your schedule, so that section is what the fees have been, and we're not modifying that at all.
And you just highlighted what the changes were.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Any further questions? Any further discussion? I have a motion. And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to county manager's report.
Nothing alike, thank you.
Thank you, county manager. With that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for a good meeting. Have a good night.